Senator, please stand where we cite to pledge allegiance. Right hand over heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I'd like to call to the microphone the deputy mayor, Kathy Baxley. As I always say in the beginning of every meeting, we like to recognize all the good that goes on in this village, and there is so much. And month after month, I get the privilege of standing here and introducing people who do wonderful things to make this village such a wonderful place to live. So, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Murray. It is my honor to recognize very important people in our community, in particular, the student officers from Southside High School, Southside High School principal, Mr. Murphy, and superintendent of Rockville Center Schools, Dr. Johnson. So if you would all please just come stand up here for a moment, all the officers, you are going to be in a picture in a moment, but we just want to recognize you. And I don't know everybody's names, I'm sorry. But we have representatives from the freshman, sophomore, senior classes, as well as the general student government, and I know the junior officers are not here because tonight is their junior gala. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, each year, the U.S. Department of Education seeks out and celebrates great American schools by awarding the National Blue Ribbon School Recognition. Schools are selected based on their overall academic excellence and their progress in closing achievement gaps among students. All kindergarten through 12th grade public schools in the nation are eligible. This year, seven schools in New York State were selected, and we are proud to recognize that Southside High School received this honorable recognition. The National Blue Ribbon Award affirms the hard work of the students of the Rockville Center School District, its educators and administrators, families, and the community. We are proud to welcome Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Johnson, Southside High School Principal, Mr. Murphy, and the Southside High School Student Government Officers to our meeting tonight in recognition of this award. And I was hoping one of you guys would want to speak a little bit about what this means for our town. Hi, Mr. Murphy.
Hi.
How are you?
Two straws. Thank you, Mayor Murray. And actually, thank you to the community. This is a, this is a community award. While it is bestowed onto the high school, it really is a testament to a long-term vision of providing access and opportunity for all our students. The entry level, and we were invited to apply, starts with achievement testing, but it's so much more than that. The, the application process gives us an opportunity to really show off and to celebrate all those things that our students do to make the place such a better place, from, from the junior gala tonight with over 200 juniors celebrating their uniqueness, to over 65 clubs and activities, to as well as the academic accomplishments. So, on behalf of Dr. Johnson and myself, I'd like to thank the student leadership, as well as the community, for giving this opportunity to put our best foot forward.
Thank you.
with our police commissioner, to Garden City to accept a Community Traffic Safety Award. I'm going to call on the police liaison, trustee Michael Seppe, to come up and speak to this award.
Recently, our police department received safety awards from the American Automobile Association that we are very proud to present tonight. The first is the Gold Award for Community Safety, and the other is the AAA Pedestrian Safety Citation. These awards are based upon the national work of the AAA that tracks statistics in traffic accidents, fatalities, and community measures that are aimed at reducing or eliminating the same. And this year, the village was very proud to have been notified that we, that we won the Gold Award for AAA's Northeast Community Traffic and Safety Program in the areas of government affairs and traffic safety. This is due to the fact that the village has not just deployed, but effectively deployed visible speed trailers, education programs, aggressive enforcement, and aggressive information campaigns in reaching a goal that we are very fortunate to have in, which unfortunately is rare among communities nowadays, in that for the reporting period, for four consecutive years in a row, the village had a total of zero pedestrian fatalities. And we'd like to recognize that work that might otherwise not go recognized, thank the AAA for that award, and present these plaques to Commissioner Vafidis on behalf of the association and on behalf of the village that appreciates the result. Thank you.
Unfortunately, not everything I get to say up here is bragging about great things that happened in Rockville Center. Unfortunately, a week and a half ago, in Pittsburgh, a horrific act of cowardness was, happened, and 11 innocent people were murdered. And I've asked trustee Seppe to come up and say some words about those people.
what took place in Pittsburgh, an event as obscene and horrific as we have seen in American history, and unfortunately learned the hard way that this literally is the worst act of anti-Semitism in recorded American history. And so, when we received word that Temple Benet Shalom was hosting a memorial service, of course, we said we would go, because our attitude was that family members of friends and neighbors had died, and that's simply what you do. And we were somewhat surprised by exactly how the service turned out and exactly what took place. And when I say surprised, I mean in a good way. First, whether by invitation or at their own initiative, religious leaders from across Long Island were invited to speak and did so, from Monsignor Koenig from St. Agnes to a local Protestant minister, to the Imam of the South Shore Muslim Center. All of them spoke not just with sympathy and kindness, but with actual beauty in expressing their remorse, and not just their condolences, but their support for the local Jewish community and for the Jewish community in this country. And they talked about how while all murder is heinous, the point was made that a murder of people, simply for being who they are and for praying to God pursuant to their own religion, is particularly obscene. And many members of the congregation spoke, and we were touched by how far out of their way members of the congregation went to acknowledge first responders, four of whom were shot, in attempting to save the victims of the massacre. And we were moved by how far out of the way the congregation also went to thank everyone that was there who wasn't necessarily a congregant or even Jewish. And then, local officials spoke. And I was struck by the fact that all of them who spoke, almost without exception, didn't come to really offer just sympathy or empty platitudes, or say what they were expected to say, or take a cheap opportunity to score political points. But it's one of the first instances I've seen, and it's very easy to get jaded in this business, of people from different denominations and political parties coming together to express genuine remorse and sorrow, but more than that, love and support for their neighbors, for people they live next to or down the street from, whose children go to school with our children. And the service was particularly moving, and it was very surprising to me, that going to an event where you expected such sadness and such revulsion at the horror of what happened, believe it or not, turned into an uplifting event. People literally across the spectrum, religious, political, social, you name it, got together and for about an hour or so, and we're so used to this and we can be so jaded by it, for about an hour, no one was labeling anyone or attaching hyphens to their identity, or buying into the divisions of race, of sex, of gender, of nationality, of political persuasion, for any reason whatsoever. And it occurred to me as I sat there, that's the first time I had that feeling, and I think many people had that feeling, in a very, very long time. And we were particularly touched by, after the memorial, how many congregants either came up to us, or called us the next day, or came to my house the following day to say thank you about how much our presence meant, as if our feelings mattered in all of this. And again, it occurred to me that this is the first time in a long time that people have come together, not as anything in particular with any sort of a label next to their name, but simply as human beings in a joint affirming of all that's good about that label, without, for a short period of time, with any of the things that divide us. And again, we went to an event with sadness and with grief and with revulsion and horror and just sort of disgust, and were so surprised to come away from it, feeling uplifted, literally speaking for myself and Mayor Murray, the very, very last thing that we expected. It is my own personal belief, and we've spoken about this in the past, when people rise above their differences that seem so very important in the moment, and come together as a human family across faiths, across religions, and nationalities, in a joint proclamation and affirmation of all that is good about us, it's my personal opinion that it is in those moments that God smiles upon us all. And we'd like to extend our sympathy to not just the victims from the Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, but to Jews across this country, and particularly those here in our community in the Village of Rockville Center. Our words go so far, our presence hopefully shows more, and please know that we are always here for you, not just out of platitudes or out of a sense of obligation, but because we wish to be, because extended members of our family, the family members of neighbors and friends have passed, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Seppe, for those very, very moving words. Mrs. Murray, Chief Cook is not here tonight. Our deputy chief is here. I believe you want to say some, a few words? Chief Haverden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees, village administrator. Chief Cook apologizes for not being here tonight, as most of you have heard, his father, honorary chief Thomas Cook, a 60th year member of the Rockville Center Fire Department, passed away yesterday. He's asked me to represent the fire department in the report for November. First, the fire department would like to thank deputy mayor Kathy Baxley for attending one of the eight Nassau County Fire School training nights we had. We appreciate her taking the time to see a portion of the hundreds of hours of training that our members go through each year. I tried to get her on the nozzle for one of the live burns, but that didn't seem to work out. But seriously, though, the fire department appreciates her taking her time out to learn more about us. I would also like to thank those members who attended the fire department memorial service held on October 7th. This service is when members get to pay memorizing of the passing of members over the past year. This year, we also had a ceremony for line-of-duty deaths for a recent memorial we added to Fireman's Memorial Park, located at 137 North Forest Avenue. Following calls that the members of the Rockville Center Volunteer Fire Department responded to in the month of October were 43 general alarms, there were 38 still alarms, there were 19 motor vehicle accidents, there were 223 aid cases, there were six mutual aid fire calls that responded to other departments and villages, there were four mutual aid aid cases, for a total of 325 alarms for the month of October. In the year to date, we've responded to 2,827 alarms. The fire department also continues to work with the mayor, the village board, on updating the two firehouses that are in need of major repairs, as well as replacing and repairing fire equipment that has needed or that has expired. We'd like to thank the mayor and the village board for your continued support in that matter. Also, if it interested in seeing what the Rockville Center Fire Department does, if you'd like to join, stop by any firehouse on Sunday morning and check us out. Also, if you're a kid between 13 and 17 years old and would like to join the junior fire department, they meet once a month typically on Sunday at 9:30 in the morning at 103 Maple Avenue. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief, one second.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Abenhan.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make the motion to set aside a page in the minutes in memory of honorary chief Thomas Cook, who answered his last alarm yesterday, who is the father of chief Fire Cook and firefighter John Cook.
I second.
Go on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to see the deputy mayor in the nozzle, too, so if you take her back out there, film it, please, all right? She's yelling at me now.
I have another appointment.
Mrs. Murray, action.
We have a number of action items tonight. First item is staff seeks approval to extend and clarify the terms of the contract between New York State's Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation and the Incorporated Village of Rockville Center for Project EPF 124275L6 through December 16, 2019.
So moved.
All in favor.
All right.
The staff seeks authorization for the mayor or his designate to execute the Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient Agreement for program year 44 between the County of Nassau and the Village of Rockville Center.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
The staff seeks approval of a professional service agreement with Concord Environmental, Concord Engineering Group, Incorporated, otherwise known as CEG, for consulting services for engine diagnostic testing and tuning to resolve recently detected issues for a not-to-exceed cost of $3,000, it's $4,600, in a form to be approved by the village attorney.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Staff seeks approval for additional funds for the Hendrickson Fire Truck Rescue Equipment Incorporated for preventive maintenance of fire trucks 441, 442, 443, and 445, for an amount not to exceed $8,059.46.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Staff seeks approval to accept a donation from the Woodburn Cultural Nurseries, Incorporated, of ornamental grass donation for the Village of Rockville Center's Parks Department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
We seek approval of a change order. On March 7, 2016, the board approved the design and engineering services to be fair and associates in the amount of $276,960, $66 for engineering, construction document development, and construction monitoring for the Seaman Avenue Pump Station for the Department of Public Works. A change order is requested at a cost not to exceed $27,900.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
The staff seeks approval of a resolution to publish a legal notice for the proposed bill, RVC 1809, a local law to amend the code of the Village of Rockville Center in relation to block parties and special events.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Eighth item is staff seeking approval of a professional services agreement with Operations, Inc., for 1094, 1095 ACA form preparation and filing for 2018, for a not-to-exceed amount of $4,800 in a form to be approved by the village attorney.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Staff seeks approval or authorization for the mayor or his designate to execute an agreement with ESI Group to provide employee assistance program services for all full and part-time employees and their household members, as well as children up to the age of 26 who do not reside with the employees. The agreement is from January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019, in the amount of $7,389.46 in a form to be approved by the village attorney.
So moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Is there any old business? Is there any new business?
No.
Then we ask that you approve the minutes from the executive session of September 12, 2018, the briefing session of September 27, 2018, the executive session of September 27, 2018, the executive session of October 1, 2018, and the board meeting of October 1, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We have several bids to deal with tonight. The first is we ask you to approve a resolution rejecting the award for bid number 1907, PD1, in Prenz 914.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
We ask your approval of resolution rejecting award for bid number 1907, PD2, in Prenz 915.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
We seek your approval of a resolution rejecting award for bid number 1908, PD3, in Prenz 917.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We seek your approval for a resolution rejecting award for bid number 1908, PD4, in Prenz 918.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
We ask your approval of a resolution rejecting the award for bid number 1908, PD5, in Prenz 919.
So moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
We seek your approval of a resolution rejecting award for bid number 1906, W1, in Prenz 912.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
We ask your approval of a resolution correcting the bid numbers on the surplus goods, uh, award or vote from last month.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We seek your approval of bid number 1909, CP1, in Prenz 921, that's the North Village Rehabilitation Project. We recommend award to the lowest responsible bidder substantially meeting all required specifications, namely Stasi Industries, Incorporated, for a total expenditure not to exceed $265,955.
Just on the question, Mrs. Murray, this is going to be street revitalization along North Village Avenue?
Yes, between Sunrise Highway and the train station.
Mm-hmm. Move approval?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
We seek your approval of bid number 1908, CP1, in Prenz 916, MLK Junior Community Center Window Replacement Project. We recommend award to the lowest responsible bidder substantially meeting all required specifications, namely Talty Construction, Incorporated, for a total expenditure not to exceed $148,900.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
The 10th item is seeking approval of bid number 1910E2, in Prenz 924, watt-hour demand meters. We recommend award to the lowest responsible bidder substantially meeting all required specifications, namely Got2Go Enterprises Doing Business as Got2Go Electric, Incorporated, for the base bid and option items for the years 2018 and 19, 19 and 20, and 2020 and 21. The total cost, including the base bid and options items, will not exceed $260,732.
Somebody want to move it?
So moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Hey, our final bid is seeking approval of professional services agreement with David R. Maltsch and Company for auction services for the village to provide appraisal and auction services in a form to be approved by the village attorney.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, my final item is the Department of the Fire Department report dated November 5, 2018. Dear Mayor Murray, at our regular council meeting held on October 16, we had no changes to our department membership. Our membership remains 330 members. Sincerely, Bruce A. Schorting, Department Secretary.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Mayor Murray.
Yes, I have a letter from the commissioner of the Department of Environmental Conservation. As you've seen over the last seven and a half years, this administration has been very aggressive in going after and receiving grants. Dear Mayor Murray, on behalf of Governor Cuomo, I want to congratulate you on your successful application to receive funding for an urban and community forestry project. The The Village of Rockville Center project has been approved from the state for a share of $47,295. You are to be commended for your success in this grant process. The DEC received a total of 115 applications, which were evaluated and awarded on a competitive basis. You will soon receive a letter from the DEC's Division of Lands and Forestry, which specifies, tells you about your grant and the terms and conditions. Please watch for this letter, which will advise you of the next steps. So we want to thank our grant writers Suzanne Murphy and Sullivan, and the Conservancy for their hard work in getting this grant. What this will do, we have about 4,000 trees in our village, and they will come in and evaluate each and every one of them, and let us know the condition they're in and where we can plant new trees. So congratulations once again. Another exciting news is our field up on Peninsula Boulevard, there's a north field, a south field, and a softball field in the middle. The original turf is on the south field, and we got an estimate to redo that turf. It's in horrific condition, $408,000. It would have been a little hard for us to do that, so I had asked Drew Bogner, the president of Malloy College, he was under no obligation to do so. They rarely use that field, and he has agreed to give us $200,000 to help our children going forward with a brand-new turf field. So we want to thank him for that, and that should be underway, weather permitting, the second week in December. So those are two very, very excited things that I'm very excited about. I did, I was very busy during the month, I'm not going to read them all. I just want to say tomorrow's election day, please go vote, and I wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving to them and all their families. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Murray. As the mayor said, there was so much going on this past month, the list is very long. Lots of fun activities in all different places that we attended, but I wanted to focus on one particular thing. Recently, the Deputy Commissioner of Nassau County Department of Human Services Office for the Aging reached out to Chris O'Leary at our Sandell Center due to the excellent reputation of the programs and services that we have here in Rockville Center for the older adults. He and his, some of his staff came and visited our Sandell Center, and they were blown away by the feeling of the building, the welcome, and the warmth of the residents, I mean, not residents, the members and the staff, so impressed that he asked our own supervisor, Chris O'Leary, to come lead a workshop and training for all of the Nassau County senior center directors because of how great our place is. So in late September, Chris did meet with all of the directors, and she facilitated a really dynamic workshop for everyone, and it was so well-received. And I just wanted to thank her for what she does for our seniors because of the way she works, the way she just produces such excellence there and so much fun. All these other centers are going to emulate it. So congratulations to you, Chris, it was really great. Again, as the mayor said, tomorrow's election day, please vote. Polls are open from 6:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m. at all of our local polling places here in Rockville Center. Also, this Sunday, November 11th, please join us at the Rec Center at 11:00 a.m. for our annual Veterans Day Ceremony. It's always a wonderful tribute to our veterans, and it's being run by Frank Cologne and here in town. Everyone is welcome, it will be in the gym at the Rec Center. And lastly, I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Just the Oppenheimer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor and trustee Seppi mentioned, the values of our country have been rocked to its core. In the last few weeks, we have seen political violence in the form of bombs mailed to 15 different people because of their political opinions. We have seen horrific events in Pittsburgh. If we go back further, two years ago, we saw a similar event in South Carolina, where just the hate that's floating around is saddening. And I was thinking of a couple of things. I'm going to ask trustee Seppi to read some words that were written in 1958 by Richard Rogers as part of the musical The South Pacific, because I think you'll be able to hear him better than you'll be able to hear me. Mr. Seppi, would you please?
You've got to be taught to hate and fear. You've got to be taught each and every year. It has to be drummed into one's ear. You have to be carefully taught. You have to be taught to be afraid of those whose eyes are oddly made, and people whose skin is of a different shade. You have to be carefully taught. You have to be taught before it is too late, before you reach the age of six, seven, or eight, to hate those that your relatives hate. You have to be carefully taught. Richard Rogers, 1958.
It also brings to mind, thank you, Mr. Seppi, something that Hillel, an ancient Jewish scholar espoused, and what he said was, "What is hateful to you, do not do to your fellow." We more commonly hear it as the golden rule, "Do unto others as you would have others do unto you." My prayer is that we learn that lesson before we learn any others. I wish all a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gillo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I won't be very long, but I just want to echo the sentiments of the entire board, starting with the mayor. This was a, we were privileged to attend memorial service at Temple Benet this past week. The outpouring of support, the presence, and the welcoming, the welcoming nature of the congregants really made it, I know for me, a very, very humbling experience. But I also think, as trustee Seppi said, it brought us together and made us stronger. And as a lot of the celebrants, including Rabbi Diamond, Rabbi Gruber, and the way they spoke so eloquently that night, I believe that that ceremony served to strengthen this as a community even further. And as the deputy mayor just talked about, a lot of the fun events that we have the opportunity to attend in the past month, and this time of year is always a wonderful time. It's the type of month that makes us special as well as a community, with so many different types of events and activities for our young folks, for our seniors. And I couldn't be more humbled, as I sit up here almost every month speaking to you about this, what a privilege, what a privilege it is for me personally to serve in this capacity as a village trustee, and I couldn't be any more honored to serve with this board as well. Please know, as we sit here, as we talk every month, we're here doing what we believe is best and in the best interest of our community. Trustee Oppenheimer is absolutely right. These times, most recently, are really horrible, and the amount of hate that gets swirled around, whether it's in the media, whether it's, whether it's in public, this is not, these are not good times, and I don't think we as a community are going to stand for it. I know collectively we'll do everything we can to ensure that our community remains an accepting community, a safe community, and a place that we are all honored to live and raise our families. On a side note, just my personal condolences to Chief Cook, I haven't had an opportunity to see him yet for the loss of his dad. I do wish, I do encourage the entire village, obviously, to the extent you'll hear this tomorrow, to come out and vote, please. It's probably the highest, your most important civic duty, and invite all of you to come on out and vote. Polls are open, as I believe the deputy mayor said, from 6:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m. For those of you who don't know where to vote in particular, there's a number at the Board of Elections that you can call, which is 516-571-2411, so that you ensure that you're at the right polling place as well. And then lastly, just want to wish each and every one of our families and individuals as well a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before I call on trustee Seppi, you know, I do want to mention just two or three things that I went to. On October 26th, on Friday, Senator Todd Kaminsky had a golden gathering at our Rec Center, where over 500 seniors came and got their blood pressure checked, they got flu shots, they got checked for many, many things, and I really appreciate him doing that for all the seniors in Rockville Center and around Nassau County. I got to go on Saturday morning, once again, to Riverside School for the beginning of the Basketball League in Rockville Center of Boys and Girls. And I was told it started in 1955, and I mention that because trustee Oppenheimer and I, in about 1959, were on the court. And so I tell the children that, and they just don't know when 1955 was. So we, some of the trustees, myself, went to the Ragged Muffin Parade on Sunday, the 28th, which is fantastic. Families, children, they all get dressed up, and we have a wonderful time. And Ginger Kriegen, our superintendent, gives out awards, it's wonderful. On Monday, October 29th, Laura Curran, our county executive, invited me to the steps of the county seat, where about 100 of us, elected officials, and rabbis, and ministers, and priests, all prayed for the victims of Pittsburgh. And right after that, I was invited by Governor Cuomo to go out to Brentwood, where he announced a $20 million grant to fight MS-13, one of the most important things going on on Long Island and all around this country right now, where he's trying to give an option to these young immigrants, give them something to do. They get sucked into these gangs at 10, 12, 14 years old. So they're going to build a brand-new rec center for $15 million to give them an opportunity to choose another path. The other $5 million is for cameras and lights in almost every park in that area. And just Friday night, I went to the Malloy Gala, that was fun, and the entertainment was the original cast of the Jersey Boys. And that's all I have. Trustee Seppi.
Mr. Mayor, in light of remarks, I'll read the announcements. On Tuesday, November 6th, from 6:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night, Election Day, for your local contact, or rather, I should say, your local polling place, if there are any questions, you can reach the Board of Elections at 571-2411. On Saturday, November 10th, from 8:30 in the morning till 9:30, is the One Mile Family Fun Run taking place alongside the 5K Annual Village Race. On Sunday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m., the village is having its Veterans Day Ceremony at the Recreation Center. As to this event, for those of you who have school-aged children, I strongly encourage you to attend, it's less than an hour, and the village has veterans, literally, that served in Korea and World War II. It's a, it's a unique opportunity to really talk to people who are part of living history, and it's well worth the time of going. On Thursday, November 22nd, Village Hall is closed in observance of Thanksgiving. On Thursday, November 29th, at 6:00 p.m., will be the next briefing session for the Board of Trustees here in Village Hall. On Thursday, the 29th, again, at 7:30, will be the annual Christmas tree lighting at the Village Green. And the next full meeting of the Board of Trustees will be on Monday, December 3rd, at 7:00 p.m., again, here at Village Hall.
Thank you. Ellen? Ellen is always first for privilege of the floor, so I just call on Ellen first.
Thank you so much. I want to thank Michael for his very moving words about this service the other night. That was very touching, and thanks for doing that. And thank Ed for his rendition of From South Pacific. On behalf of the museum board, I'd like to thank everybody who attended the tea. It was a sold-out crowd of over 100 people. And former mayor Mary Bosser talked about the history of tea, and tea was served, and we had sandwiches, tea sandwiches, and scones and stuff from Chateauneuf, and candy from Emil's in Oceanside. And the desserts were from, I forget, I'm sorry, my fault. Anyway, I'd like to thank the mayor's task force under the direction of Gwen Finer, and the Boy Scouts. They were very helpful in serving and cleanup and all that that needed to be done, and it was a very successful event. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I'm going to go home and sleep fast because I'm working at the polls tomorrow.
Ah, thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Yes, sir? Tell us your name and where you live.
Brad Slover, 416 Merrick Road. Good evening, members of the board. Sure, sorry, I'll move this. I have to admit, I'm a little unprepared and uneducated to ask the questions I'm going to ask, but the story I saw on News 12 this morning just completely bothers me. I'm not political, the person signed who was allegedly taken, I'm probably not going to vote for, and even after this, I'm probably still not going to vote for. But it just bothers me that, at least from what I can read, and again, that's why I'm here, hopefully maybe you guys can educate me, but it just really bothers me that this, that this apparently happened. And the article I read is that the village is referring to this ordinance that essentially, and again, maybe the village attorney can educate me. I've lived in the village basically my entire life, except for three years when I was at college. I haven't owned real property, so never really investigated, but I have heard, growing up, I guess the rumors are the, oh, the town or the village has, you know, you can't do this within three feet, or they have a right to do this. So I'm kind of, I guess my first question is, perhaps the village attorney can enlighten me, is what is that exact ordinance, and what does it say, and what does it allow the village to do?
I light on you, there we go. So first of all, it's been the village's policy for years to not allow signs to be put up of any kind on the village's property. And it's unfortunate, but people don't generally understand that that strip of property between the curb and the street in front of your house is not your property, it actually belongs to the village. So that's been the village's policy, we don't allow signs, we don't allow anybody to put up signs. I don't know the facts of the particular incident, I wasn't even around at the time this happened, but that's basically something the village has done for years, we don't, we don't allow those signs. You can put them on your lawn, you know, if you're upward from the sidewalk on your property, political signs are permitted, specifically in the, in the village code for a certain amount of time after the election, and then they have to come down. But the village doesn't interfere with them. My understanding is, and I've lived here all my life, that the village does that on a uniform basis, that we don't, we don't allow the signs in that location.
So the village actually owns it, it's not like an easement or anything like that?
Right, it's actually owned, yeah.
Do our, again, I haven't read the stat, I didn't have any time, a very busy day today, would have liked to have done some research myself, but really was not able to. But I mean, is it, is it typical in the ordinance that then because it's the village's property, essentially the village can just come and remove anything that's not, or is the homeowners usually get like a warning or something?
Well, the legal theory behind is if you leave something on public property, you've abandoned it.
And I would agree. But my, I guess my question is...
And there are other ways it could have been handled, I mean, it's possible to either just leave it on the lawn. I think it would be difficult for the village to go ring every doorbell, to talk to the owners about returning the signs. And again, I don't know the facts of what happened, but generally, what's happens with, in most communities with this, is they pick up the signs, take them away.
Because, I mean, the part that bothers me the most is that it seems political in nature, obviously. And again, according to the article, I don't know, it was the Building Department, I guess maybe that's a responsibility to go and clear the abandoned property on, on public property. But, you know, the fact that it, the way it's being applied doesn't seem that it's across the board and fair, because, again, I've lived here for a long time, and I don't really want this to happen, but I have to say this because it's only one of the, only examples I can really use, is before I came here, I decided, you know what, I'm going to drive around for 15 minutes, and I'm going to see what I can see on that strip of lawn from the curb to the sidewalk, and just drive around and see what I can find. I thought I was going to have to... I thought I was gonna have to drive around for a while, fifteen, I needed one minute. I went down two blocks, I see eight things on the block that are on that strip that the village isn't removing. Now, seven of those are basketball hoops, again, I don't wanna be the one to say, hey, go take away these kids' basketball hoops, but I went down a block that I lived on eight years ago, same basketball hoop is there eight years ago, that was there, is there today, that was there eight years ago. Then there's seven more, whether or not they have put that out in some kind of protest because of what's going on, I don't know, I didn't drive down the block yesterday. Pottery, um, other things of that nature that are there, those aren't being removed. So the fact that this seems to be something that some individual allegedly did, who works for the village on village time, I'm assuming too, in a village vehicle, two guys, again, based on the video, just, it really bothers me. So I guess my question is, is, is the board support this? If they find out, I don't know if you guys have, again, it's only been a day, so maybe some of you don't know, know all the facts, but I'm kinda curious whether or not the village or the board is gonna do any kind of investigation to see what, what happened here, and at the end of it, to determine what they're gonna do going forward. Because if it's only one person's sign that's being taken away, what about all the other things that I see on there? So the fact that somebody would go and do that and just apply that ordinance to one sign, again, for somebody I'm not probably gonna vote for, so I'm not here to defend that person, but that, that, that just really, really bothers me.
Right, I, I can speak to that. I'm not on the board, I'm the village administrator, and my understanding of the situation was, look, typically, if there are signs on property that is overtly the village, if somebody puts signs in front of Village Hall, or if somebody puts signs on the Village Green, or on the curb strip in front of the Village Green, we would very clearly and quickly remove those signs. In the neigh, yeah, in the neigh, yeah, I get it. In the neighborhoods, we typically don't remove the signs, except that I'm told that there was a call, and somebody complained about the signs. So we have a code enforcement unit, we have two code enforcement units, in fact. So the code, code enforcement unit was sent out to enforce the code in the neighborhood that the complaint came from. My understanding is that signs from both sides were taken down, and as soon as we found, as soon as those people who are more politically attuned, the mayor, the Board of Trustees, found out what happened, said, "Don't take any more signs, we're not taking any more signs, we're gonna leave them where there are, where they are, as long as they're in the neighborhoods."
I mean, that, that might've been a nice response to the board, instead of pointing to the ordinance in the article, I don't know who responded to that, I don't know who's in charge of public affairs for the village, but that seems like, that could've been a good response, as opposed to reading that the village just points to an ordinance that says, "Oh, black or white letter law, that's all we gotta do."
You're right.
'Cause I'm lodging, I'd like to lodge a complaint against the entire village for every single person who has something between the curb and the sidewalk, so please do then whatever you need to do and remove all of that, because if you're gonna do it to one, you gotta do it to all.
You're right, and so what this has brought up to all of us is that that code that we've been relying on is not really as clear as it, we might want it to be.
Well, maybe that's something, again, that the board might wanna, that the village might wanna work on, because if you take somebody's property when they're not, and they're not allowed to, sure, the village attorney could tell you what happens then, all right?
I'm glad you came to bring it up.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else privilege of the floor? Seeing none? Move to adjourn?
Oh.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Not everybody.